This is Marlene Sokol, education reporter for the Tampa Bay Times. I want to thank and welcome the viewers tuning into the Tampa Bay Chambers 2020 Virtual Candidate Forum Series. The Tampa Chamber focuses on policy, not politics, and while they do not endorse this forum, serves as a means to make sure its members and business community are informed on where candidates stand on issues that are important to business. In today's case, Hillsborough County School Board District 5. I'd like to go off script just for a quick minute to point out that this particular election represents District 5, where the school district has some of its biggest challenges. The stakes are very high, the issues are very compelling. And so it is so important, you know, who does this job? And I'm happy to say I've met most of you and I know of all of you by reputation. And everybody in this group has done so much already, either at the grassroots level or in the schools or in government to bring equity to our schools. So it's very reassuring, including Shake Washington, who is not here today. It's very reassuring to know that whoever wins, this district will be very well served. And I'm proud to have gotten to know all of you. So getting back on script, I'd like to introduce today's candidates before we start with the questions. We have Elvis Piggott, we have Selena Ward, and we have Tammy Shamberger. And thank you all for joining us. My first question, and this is where we'll get to know you a little bit. We are just six weeks from Election Day. So starting with Elvis Piggott, can you give us a brief 60-second or less update on your campaign? And what message you want to deliver to voters in the final stretch?
Our campaign update is really going well. The momentum is really good. I think we're on the ground very strong. And we have people constantly day in, day out, making sure that our message is heard. I think in this last moments of this campaign that we want to continue to make sure that we sound alarm and understand that it's time for a good change. We know, as you said prior, that this seat will be represented well. Make no mistakes that I believe that this seat has been represented well. I just believe that there's a different angle, which I want to tackle with ESE students and deal with it. I want our campaign to know that it's not about being divisive. It's not about being anger. It's not about attacking anybody. It's solely about making sure that we continue to have an advocate and a fighter in this seat, that we will continue to run this campaign and let the people know that we want a good person on the school board that's going to continue to fight for our kids, that's going to advocate. And we want your vote. We want you to allow us to be the change that you need. And we want you to know that we're going to continue to be a voice for you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Selena Ward.
Hello, I'm Selena Ward, and I am a candidate for School Board District 5. I'm an educator, a mother, and a veteran. And I am excited about bringing a fresh perspective to District 5. One of the things that I think is very important, and I would love to elaborate on what Mr. Piggott just said, is that we are blessed to have such great candidates running for this district. And I believe right now, we are in need of a fresh perspective and a change. As a substitute teacher, I have worked in the schools and I've seen that there's much needed change. There are things that we have going on in our schools that are unacceptable. The third grade is a very important year with the prison and pipeline. Why do we have vacancies in the third grade in District 5? We need to have permanent teachers in those classrooms to make sure that our children are succeeding. Our schools are not in the conditions that they need to be. That is not right. You expect our children to go to school every day in a safe, clean environment. Right now with COVID, we are definitely talking about health and safety. This is something that should have been on the agenda a long time ago. And in District 5, we need to address that. We need to make sure that we have some basics for our students because they deserve those. And then we need to definitely look for some of the frills that we have in other districts. But right now, it's time that we improve and we demand the basics that we need. I look forward to being part of that change and making sure that our children receive everything that they deserve as they continue their education at Hillsborough County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And board member Tammy Shamberger.
Thank you so much, Marlene, for moderating this important forum today. As everyone knows, I am Tammy Shamberger, the current Hillsborough County School Board Member for District 5. The campaign has gone absolutely phenomenal. Of course, I have the support of the community at large. I have well-named recognition, and my work over the last four years have certainly spoken for me and for itself. Over the last four years, I've had the opportunity to really take a deep dive into District 5, trying to untangle and unpack all of the issues that have long, very long plagued our district, resulting in low student achievement. And I tell you, over the last four years, we've done some great work. We've done some unpacking, and we've certainly moved the needle forward when it comes to District 5. When it comes to our lowest performing students, when it comes to low student achievement, when it comes to lack of equity, racial equity, pay equity, a lack of equity in our facilities, especially those facilities in those school buildings in District 5, we have tackled all of those issues. These issues, as you know, are generational. They're longstanding. They've been around this district for many, many, many years. And as you know, Marlene, I've been very vocal about these issues. And we certainly can't fix it in four years. Maybe we can't even fix it in eight or 12. But I tell you, for the next four years, I'm going to continue on the same path, being very vocal, exposing the issues, holding the superintendent especially accountable for lifting and changing the results for District 5 students and families. And so 2020 and beyond, I'm going to be your board member. I'm going to continue to move the needle and make sure all of our students, our families, and our staff really have access to the resources they need to succeed. But most important, we want to make sure that every student, every student, regardless of their race, socioeconomic status, or whatever, has an opportunity to academically succeed here in Hillsborough County School District. I'm committed to doing it for every school that's an A school.
Thank you. And if I interrupt you with "thank you," it's because they're telling me the time is short.
Understood.
I want to start with Selena, and I'm going to switch to first names now on this next question. This will be hard to do in a minute and a half. We are asking each of you to tell us what are the three most pressing issues for the board right now, and what are some things you will do to address them? So starting with Selena, please.
Yes, thank you so much for that. And also too, thank you so much for moderating this. The three most pressing issues right now, you know, if you had asked me that question before COVID, I would have began differently. But my first answer has to be, of course, the schools, the conditions of the schools. We have schools that do not have soap, do not have toilet paper. That is unacceptable. And one of the things that I would do is be present in the schools. Teachers are not complaining, parents aren't complaining. So it takes a board member who is present in the schools. As a substitute teacher, I have seen that we are going without basics. We need to make sure that our schools are clean now more than ever, as well as safe. Why do we have schools that have bat drippings coming from the ceiling? Our kids can't perform in those type of conditions. So clean schools would be my number one right now. Safe paths to schools. Right now, we're talking about transportation a lot. There's a lot going on when we look at transportation. Our children have faced many issues with crossing Hillsborough County, crossing Hillsborough the street. We've had so many issues there. We have to make sure that the kids have a safe path to school. Driving to school is not the option for a lot of our kids. Many of them walk, some of them bike, there and from. So we need to make sure that our kids have a safe path to school and our parents aren't worried about that. And we need to invest in that. We should never vote against anything when it comes to dealing with our transportation and our safety for our children. And of course, equity and education. Our schools need resources.
Thank you.
We need to make sure that our teachers are receiving the resources needed to make sure that can be productive.
Okay, I'm sorry, there was a sound delay, but I interrupted your thought. But we have to watch time. Tammy, what are the three most pressing issues? What are you going to do to fix them?
Yeah, thank you so much for that question, Marlene. Certainly, we can all talk about all little nuances and issues because there's millions of issues in the school district. But it's important to understand, as a school board member, your role is to look at it more systemically. And so when we talk about the systemic issues in the Hillsborough County School District, and really all school districts, the most pressing right now is funding. Funding, there's a awful lack of funding by our state legislators when it comes to public education. You know, here in Hillsborough, we are student-rich, but we're property-poor. And so we have to really rely on the state to give us money to properly educate our kids. When we have proper funding, then we can pay our teachers better first and foremost. We can provide all types of options, all the issues that Ms. Ward talked about. Those issues can be fixed with proper funding. Secondly, we have equity as an issue. As you know, Marlene, I have emerged as an equity champion for our district. We need to make sure that we eliminate all systemic and institutional racism out of this district. When we talk about the disparities in discipline and the disparities in student achievement, especially our Black population here in the district. Lastly, student achievement is huge. That is our paramount duty to make sure our students are provided with a proper education. And so, and we want to close that achievement gap, especially right here in District 5, where we have perpetually low-performing schools. No student, no school should be on this bottom 300 list, not one school in Hillsborough County. It is unacceptable. And so as a school board member, I advocate systemically. I'm going to continue to use my voice to advocate in Tallahassee. I've lobbied in DC. We're going to be very vocal here from Hillsborough at 901 East Kennedy from the DAS as well, making sure that systemically, we can make the school system a better and stronger place for our students to thrive.
Thank you. Elvis, what are the three most pressing issues?
Marlene, I'm sorry. Marlene, I'd like to rebuttal. My name was called. And so I know that since my name was called, can I rebuttal, please? My name was actually called.
It was in a... I agree with your statement. Yeah.
I guess, unless someone tells me you can't. Oh, I was just told no. I'm sorry, we're not...
All right, thank you.
Okay, just do what I'm told. Elvis, over to you.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Pressing issues of our district. We have pressing issues of our district as well as pressing issues of District 5. And I think for me personally, what I want to really feel, what I feel the pressing issues for me is basically our student achievement. And that's why I came up with the BAM Initiative, Black Achievement Matters, really making sure that we are monitoring the achievement of our Black and Brown students. Equity, the resources, making sure the personnel that we do have, as our current board member stated, that we have to lobby and continue to work with Tallahassee, that we can able to fund our schools, when to make sure that we can have wraparound services and making sure the resources that our kids need, whether they're ESE or whatever program that they're in and whatever challenges they may face, that they have those resources that they are able to rely on. To be very clear, that when I was in school, I didn't have those resources, even though they gave me the title. They didn't give the resources. They basically will put a title on you without the supply, with the resources, without giving you the resources you need. And I think we have to most definitely address that within our district. Throwing people in the classroom or putting them in the portables back in that day is just not the answer because we don't have the funding to actually adequately reach out to our kids and make sure that they are being able to succeed in life. Safety, transportation, our COVID-19 situation is most definitely a pressing issue for many parents as well as our students because we do understand two parts to this, that parents have a responsibility to work and provide for their children, which creates this big divide in District 5 because parents have to know that I either have to send my child to school and trust that my child will come home without a COVID, without COVID-19, or I have to stay home and risk that I don't have a roof over my child's head. It's a very pressing issue for our community, it's a pressing issue for our constituents. And I think that that's an issue that we will have to kind of look at, to making sure that we can reassure our parents that sending your child to school will be safe and they won't have those issues. So safe conditions in our schools is very important for me and very pressing. And I don't think that we, as a district, is doing enough to reassure our parents that our kids will be safe.
Thank you. Selena, moving to our next question, we'll start with you, please. What experience can you describe with partnerships between school and business? And what ideas do you have to enhance those relationships?
I don't mind going first, but you started with me last time, Marlene.
I'll get the hang of it.
Okay, I'm sorry. That threw me off because I thought we were going to rotate. So would you tell me the question again, please?
Yes. What experience do you have with school and business partnerships? And what ideas do you have to partner the schools with businesses in Hillsborough County?
Absolutely. So one of the things that I am excited about doing and bringing to the school board is collaboration and partnerships. The experience that I have is with businesses and partnerships is through volunteer work. I'm a part of an organization where we collaborated with philanthropic community to make sure that we provided services, and a lot of those services were in District 5 schools. So I know that we are lucky in Tampa to have a very philanthropic community. And one of the things I would like to do is see more partnerships so we can fill some of those needs that all of us have spoken about earlier. For example, in some parts of the county, we have parents that'll come in and they'll do something like, you know, redo a football field. Well, we don't have that kind of income in this side of town. But what we can do is we can create partnerships with businesses and have them come in and join our team and make sure that our students are receiving the resources and the facilities and the different things, our facilities are up to par and the different things that they need to make sure they are competitive and they also have access. So I believe that that is very important. And I've done that through my volunteer work with an organization, a large organization that I'm a member of here in Tampa. And we have been proud to have served District 5 and many of the schools in District 5 and provide them with resources.
Thank you. Elvis, school and business partnerships. What's your experience? What are your ideas?
Well, first thing, I think, being pastor for 14 years, I think partnership is just the reality. If you are part of any nonprofit organization, you understand what partnership looked like within our community. And I know we put often emphasis on the board members and we emphasize the school district. But if the truth be told, in District 5, we have to most definitely not just have partnership, but build relationships. Because in that district, you have to make sure that you have relationships with those local businesses, with those business owners, that they are willing to come to the schools and they are willing to offer their service and lend their support. I've been a part of the SAC program at many of our schools. And that's basically getting the information from business leaders, parents, and the school faculty administration to find out how we can continue to push our kids forward. A lot of our schools have a very low PTA presence. But yet, if we have a strong community partnership and relationships, we can always pull on those businesses to do many things. Haircuts, strong relationship with business partners, as I was talking about in the SAC, reaching out to partners to make improvements for resources and programs, student incentives. Sometimes when you want to do things, and that's one of those things that's on the BAM project for me, that when we want to talk about the attendance for the ABCs, and that's attendance, that's behavior, and that's curriculum, making sure that we can merge with these partners, the business partners, to give out incentives, to incentivize our kids, to make sure that they come to school on time, to make sure that they are able to behave in class. Because the school district, along with our board members in our school, they can't do it alone. We need a collective partnership, our parent involvement, our community. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And Tammy?
Thank you, Marlene. So, you know, as a board member, one of the most important things we do outside of advocating for our students and families is working with our business partners. Business partnerships in the Hillsborough County School District are critical in filling the gaps. We work so well, and we've done so well with our business partners because we are a tried and true integrated system where we work with our business partners, again, to really help lift education and help fill those gaps where we can't fill them. I'm reminded of some great partnerships, even with the chamber. A couple of years ago, the superintendent, along with the school board, really had some deep conversations about how we can use the business part, the business community, excuse me, to help really educate and lift education here in Hillsborough. And out of that came many great partnerships. The one that I'm really reminded of immediately is that with like Brian Butler and our CEOs in the schools. We know that education is everybody's responsibility. And not only do we want the lowest level where maybe a family or a PTA or just a local business may support our schools with small donations, we need every business in Hillsborough County to be educated about education. Because again, remember, it's our job to make sure that we're creating and developing a qualified workforce. So as a board member, we really have to forge these relationships. It's really going to help us get us where we need in education, but also for the future of our community and its economic stability. So as a board member, I'm going to continue to hold the superintendent accountable for forging these relationships, working with the chamber, the greater chamber on these initiatives, and also encouraging businesses to learn more about education and how they can help the future of our community.
Okay, thank you. And Tammy, I'm going to start with you on this next question because you've got benefit of experience here. But we would like to know how you would go about collaborating on developing a comprehensive five-year plan for the district. What are your thoughts on that?
Oh, thank you, Marlene. Listen, that is so extremely important. You know, when you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And so we know just relatively recent in the Hillsborough County School District, have we even come up with a strategic plan? And so if we don't have a blueprint, then we'd be wandering aimlessly and just be failing all over the place. And so as a board, it's very important that we collaborate with the superintendent and certainly his staff on the vision moving forward for the district. It's important that we talk about our KPIs, our key performance indicators, so we can have some measurable outcomes in the district. We can't just say, hey, let's make every school an A. There has to be a methodical plan on how we get there. It has to be measured and tracked along the way. And we have to hold the superintendent accountable for those results. And I tell you, that's one of the biggest things we do as a school board, is develop that strategic plan, whether it's five years, now we're maybe talking about making it more ongoing. Maybe we change it every three years. This is very fluid. And so every year, we've done good with assessing where we are and then readjusting for the future years. Again, if you plan to, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. This is really the most critical piece of being a school board member, is talking about and laying out the plan and holding the superintendent accountable for that plan so that we can be successful.
Thank you. Elvis, what are your thoughts on a five-year plan?
I think it's wonderful. I think it's necessary. As our current board member has said, that it is important that you have it. You can't, you can't go in with your own agenda. You can't go in with your own plan, and you can't go in with what you think of work. I know for a certainty, it's no secret that we only have one candidate that has done the job. And so I most definitely, Tammy Shamberger is the board member. I most definitely, when elected as the school board member, will have to most definitely work with her, understand what she's already championed and how we can continue to champion and build because everything that we do has to be planned out, as she talked about. You can't just randomly say, hey, I'm going to jump in and this is what I'm going to do. You still need four votes. You still need to make sure that one representative of District 5 still impacts our whole district. So when we talk about making sure that we're creating a plan for District 5, we have to create a plan for the Hillsborough County School District and make sure that District 5 is included. Our students is not left out of the plan. And that takes everyone to come together collectively. And also that superintendent that we currently have, I'm pretty sure that he have not even got to his 100-day plan that he had put out when he was hired as our superintendent due to the pandemic and so many other things that have took place. So I think working with him, making sure we're collaborative and doing things together to make sure all of our kids in our district is not forgotten, that would be my, that would be my goal.
Okay, thank you. Selena, how would you go about collaborating and developing a five-year plan?
Well, I think first of all, I would like to say that both of the other candidates definitely nailed it and have actually explained a lot of it. One of the things I would like to add to that is, when we were planning a five-year plan, we also want to make sure that we include short-term goals within that. As we've seen recently, that we need to make sure that we're auditing and we're checking to make sure that everything is done the way that we have planned. And I think that's very important. And as a school board member, it is your responsibility to make sure that you're paying close attention to the plans and that everything is being followed the way that you anticipated. Just as said earlier, making sure that everyone is on board. Yes, we definitely want to have a plan that is specific to District 5, but it would be a goal-oriented plan for the entire district because we all know that it's not, we don't operate in silos, that we succeed when we all work together. So I think it's important to have a piece of the plan that is specific to District 5 to make sure that we are collaborating as a team to make sure the entire county, the entire district is performing well. So I think there are some great things that have already been said. But what I would like to see also added to that, once again, is making sure that we have short-term goals and that there is more auditing and more just reviewing to make sure that everything is being done the way that we anticipated so we don't have any surprises when we move down the line, especially when we have something as like a five-year plan.
Absolutely. A plan is only as good as the follow-through, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so a segue to something that I know Elvis is very passionate about. Students with disabilities, and I'll start with you. Please describe your experience with students with disabilities and what is your philosophy regarding meeting their needs?
Again, we talked about wraparound services. I believe that all of our students, at the end of the day, have that ability to succeed. But they all may need something different. And so when we deal with that, I was an ESE student when I was growing up. And being an ESE student when I was growing up in school simply meant that you was, at that moment, you was just segregated from all of the students in the school. That's what that looked like. No other services, no other, you know, you had an ESE specialist, you had your ESE teachers. You went to your class either before the bell rang or after the bell was rung. You did not go to lunch. You stayed in the portable classroom where you ate lunch. And your reward was that if you be good today, you're able to mainstream. Now, that's elementary, that's middle. If you be good, we'll let you eat in the cafeteria with other students. If you good today, we'll let you walk to class when the bell rang with all the other students. And I think that is insulting. I think it's just disrespectful. Because at the end of the day, it wasn't that my ESE was labeled ESC, SCD. It was, went from, they went from SCD emotional, severe emotional disturbed, to EH, emotional handicap, to S, all this crazy name simply because I had ADHD. I was just active, just couldn't sit down. And I just really believe that if we have, if we're going to label our children, we have to be able to provide the services our kids need to be able to come and achieve and go over that. I do think our district lacks the passion for making sure they focus on those schools. Too many of our schools, that is exceptional schools, Carver, they are, whether they're Dorothy Thomas, many of our schools are lacking real leadership when it comes down to advocating for our students.
Okay, thank you. Tammy, what is your philosophy and your experience with ESE?
Yeah, so certainly, this is the epitome of equity, right? Our ESE students absolutely deserve the right to have a quality education, just like every other student. And it's fact, it's incumbent upon the school district to make sure that they have every resource that they need. And I tell you, over the last four years, it has been absolutely shocking at what has really happened in this district. I don't disagree with Mr. Piggott, but I will say that, you know, our ESE folks are really working hard. However, it really has been lacking, whether it's not following IEPs correctly or just simply violating the rights of the students, especially when it comes to our Black ESE students. Many have been pushed out of the system, have been pushed into the school-to-prison pipeline because we have not done a good job and doing right by these students. If you recall, Marlene, just last, about a year ago, almost a year today, I called out Superintendent Akins from the DAS about the disproportionality of the suspension of Black ESE male students over 10 days. We should not ever rank on that list ever. But sadly, Hillsborough County ranked number one on that list. It resulted in this district being fined millions of dollars to correct those issues. Those are millions of dollars that should be put into educating these students. And when we talk about pushing these students out into our alternative settings and to some of our juvenile justice programs, that's money that's leaving the district to feed a for-profit prison system when we should be using those dollars to educate our kids. And I tell you, Mr. Piggott talks about his experience. This experience starts in elementary school. When we talk, when we look at the disproportionate suspension of Black students, even as early as kindergarten, this is a system that has to be fixed. When we talk about being an effective board member, this is the systemic issue that we must address. We must hold the superintendent accountable. We must hold our state and our federal level accountable as well. But I tell you, I've been vocal about this issue, and I'm going to continue to fight for this.
Thank you. And Selena, you also bring the experience of a classroom teacher. What is your experience with students with disabilities? And what is your philosophy that we can hear about?
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because my first assignment this school year was in an ESE class. It was a kindergarten ESE class that was combined. And they did not have a permanent teacher. So they had to combine that classroom with another. It's a District 5, it's a District 5 class. They had to combine it with another class. There were two classes combined, four-year-olds, four, three and four-year-olds, ESE students. And it was a tough situation. I worked right beside that teacher. And it was a tough situation. I worked right beside that teacher and two teachers' aides with those students. And I will tell you that when you look at funding, we all know that there is additional funding given for ESE students. We should never have a vacancy in an ESE class. It takes a special type of teacher with a special certification. So we need to work on making sure that we retain and recruit ESE teachers. That is a definite need. I was in there. I saw, I saw for my own eyes what was needed. It saddens me when I hear Mr. Pickett talk about his experience as an ESE student because that is exactly what happens. We talk about prison to pipeline, but there's also other things that happen that affect us, not only as students, but as adults when we have bad experiences in the classroom. That is why, once again, I go back to how important, I do understand, I a hundred percent agree with the incumbent and what she said about policy and, and leading and, and from the DAAS. But I do believe District Five is in a situation to where we need people on the ground to actually see what's happening in those classrooms. We are not operating the way we need to in our ESE classes, and she explained that very thoroughly. And we need to make sure that our teachers have the resources that they need and that parents also understand their rights and the services that they should be receiving.
Thank you, thank you. I, I want to shift gears and I'll start with, I guess Tammy on this one. But we have learned so much during the pandemic about so many things. And one of the things we've learned about technology, and there are so many ways that we have disparities, access to technology, ability to use technology. And so I want to start with Tammy and I'll rotate it around after this. But what are your thoughts on what this district needs to be in a better place as far as technology that, that students can use?
Yeah, so you know, COVID didn't create inequities. It widely exposed the inequities. And so, Marlene, as you've followed the district for so many years, and we've, I've actually learned so much from your following the district, we know that technology has been an issue in Hillsborough County for a very long time. We've had, or, you know, access to technology. We've had this conversation from the DAAS. And so we were really happy that when we got that absent sales tax referendum that Superintendent Akins had committed to putting the first $5 million towards technology needs. I tell you, we still aren't doing as great. We know that when COVID hit, we saw that there was simply inequity when it came to techno, technological needs. Students just didn't have access to consistent or reliable technology, which resulted in the district buying, you know, thousands upon thousands of devices. But not only do our kids not have access to reliable technology in their homes, especially our most disadvantaged and disenfranchised families of District Five, you know, who, who are using cell phones, maybe with broken screens, they don't have access to internet. It's an issue. And I tell you, it really, really opened our eyes. And so we must do better. And so when I go back to the most pressing issue, we talk about funding, we need more funding so that our students can have a one-on-one device usage. Every student needs to have access to technology because it's important, has a competitive advantage in this world to have computer literacy and know how to efficiently and sufficiently use computers. But this is an issue that we must address. Superintendent Davis is addressing it. We know at the purchase of about 50 or 60,000 laptops, we are closing the gap, but this is what we have to continually assess.
Okay, and Selena, what, what do we need to do about technology and making sure we're equitable with our technology?
Yes, I totally agree that the, the digital gap is something that came about because of COVID. It was there before. But one of the things that I would like to add to that is that we talked earlier about partnerships. This is a great opportunity for us to increase our partnerships. You know, in other places, you know, you see computer labs. So I guess I'm dating myself, but I remember when I was growing up, you know, everyone didn't have a computer at home. I didn't. So I went to the computer lab. Libraries had them, local parks and rec had them. And those were places that I could go to actually use the computer. We may have to go back to that because we can provide each household with a device, but we still have this one thing that we need, and that is internet access. And internet access is something right now that is a paid-for, something that you have to have. And even if you create hotspots, they only can take so many people at a time, so they slow down. So I believe this is a great opportunity for us to create some partnerships and to open up some old-fashioned computer labs that may even have assistance with someone that can help guide the students. One of the things that I know that I heard of from some of the students in this area is that they were given a laptop, but they weren't, they weren't sure how to use it because they were accustomed to using the standard computer. So I think having some partnerships and having some old-fashioned computer labs would be a great way to also add to closing the digital gap and provide some services and a little bit of tutoring for the students that is very much needed.
Yeah, thank you. Elvis, what should we be doing about technology for students?
Becoming innovative, I think, from a district level. A lot of our young people, we talk District Five. A lot of our young people, a lot of our learning platforms within our district, you have to have a physical laptop. You can't work on your cellphone and et cetera. But we talk reality. A lot of our kids may not have a laptop, but they have a cellphone. We got to somehow see how we can be strategic. We can become innovative. That these learning platforms can also be used on their cellphones. Do whatever we can to make sure that we are eliminating the different stumbling blocks that's in the way of our kids' learning. Partnerships is necessary. Working and having a partner with the county to make sure that we have more public libraries within District Five. Making sure we're working with the city of Tampa as well as we're working with the county to make sure that we have more recreational centers that have computer labs within them. Making sure that we have something that the district is doing right now, that they are working with their CEOs. We have CEOs that have adopted a school. Do we let them know what our wants and our axes are? We need to make sure that we have and communicate with them what we need for our schools. I think it takes a plan because if you have a CEO that's in your school and these people are willing to help, but all we ask them for is passes to get a free lunch or something where there's major issues, well, that's our fault. We're not prepared with what we have. We have it. We have to be strategic with it. We have to come up with our plans and make sure that we're reaching out to these businesses and letting them know what we want. We do it when we're running. We can do it for our kids.
Thank you. Next topic, and I'll start with Selena here. And it has to do with staff recruitment because I, I guess Governor DeSantis signed into law a base pay for teachers, I believe $47,000. And not all teachers appreciate that because those with more tenure, you know, they're going to get squeezed. So there's controversy even among that. What are your thoughts about what the school district might be able to do to attract and retain quality teachers?
Okay, so first, I want to make sure that we, we, we say that a little differently. So he did write, when I think of staff, we think of, we think of the, we don't think of teachers. So it actually was
Everybody, yes.
Yes, it was for, it was for teachers. It actually was, you know,
That's true, yeah.
Yes. So I just want to clarify that.
You left out some groups, yeah.
Yes, you did leave out some groups. I definitely want to make sure I clarify that because I know there are some groups that are saying they did not get a raise. But to answer your question, yes, so base pay for new teachers, there was an increase there. I will have to say that the incumbent did mention, has mentioned before, that Hillsborough County in the last couple of years did agree to give an overall increase of salary, the teacher salary pay. So we have already begun that. We've already started. Now, one thing I will say that we have the last couple of days, as everyone knows, we have been looking very closely at our budget. I won't go deep into that. But I will say, it's, it's not fair to make a decision on what we need to do when it comes to increasing the teacher pay right now until we get a stronghold on our budget. I will say, though, teachers are one of the most underpaid jobs out there for public servants, and we all know that. But the great thing that we know about teachers is 99% of them do not get into the job for the pay. They get into it for the love of students and the love of education. We are not paying them enough. We always need to be looking at increasing their salaries. But we need to make sure that we're doing it smart and we need to make sure that we're doing it fair across the board. So I do think we do need to take a look at that. But the increase was for new teachers only. It did not affect the, the tenure teachers. And I'm sure
Okay, we
Definitely
Okay.
Work done on our school board budget. Am I going in and out?
Yeah, but that may be an internet thing.
Okay, I'm gonna take care of that. I'll move closer. Thank you.
Okay, it could be on anybody's The, yes. Elvis, let me, let me continue with you. The, the joy of Zoom, right? But what are your thoughts on how we can attract and retain good teachers, other employees too, but school employees? How can we do that?
Believe it or not, speaking of our teachers, the, the saying in this political climate, we have to make teaching great again. We really do. We have to make it more interesting. We have to make sure that they are appreciated, better teaching environment. We have to make sure that our teachers understand that they are valued. Being very important, that our teachers is very important. We have to emphasize how needed they are and how necessary. We have to treat them right. I think that at the end of the day, we also have where we connect our elementary schools with our middle and our middle, their feeding school, feeding schools. We also have to make sure that colleges is working with our high school students, our high school, to make them want to go into the profession of teaching. Because you have a teacher shortage all over the nation. And so I think that we have to most definitely reach out. In Hillsborough County, we have something around the Fala area. Where if you're a USF student, you get 15% off, you get this, you get that. We have to merge with our businesses to make sure that we can also offer something to our teachers. Our teachers will appreciate going to Wawa and getting $5 free gas once a week. They'll appreciate getting free coffee. No Hillsborough County chair, a deputy, have to pay for any drinks when they go into Wawa, Racetrack and all that. Our teachers will be appreciative if we work with them and do something to make it known that we value what they bring to the table.
So it's a culture thing, is, is not just the money, but an appreciation.
Correct.
Tammy, what are your thoughts on attracting and retaining employees, especially teachers?
Yeah, well, when it comes to retaining teachers, first and foremost, we just need to simply listen to the teachers. We need to know exactly what it is that they need. What is it that they need to, to be happy and to stay committed to their jobs? What's causing them to really leave? And, you know, we, I have, as a school board member, really taken a deep dive into why our teachers, especially our black teachers, why they're just leaving so exponentially quick out of the district. And so, but first and foremost, listening to teachers and addressing their needs and advocating on behalf of them is what I do as a school board member, what I will continue to do. But when we talked about, when we talk about attracting teachers as well, we also have to assess, why aren't folks going into the field of education anymore? We know at the university levels, the education enrollment is down. What is it that's causing folks to not want to go into education? Why are they choosing other paths? Why are teachers leaving the district to take other careers? And so we have to really find out why. We know that primarily pay is a big factor. You know, last year, we worked hard to get our beginning teacher salary up to $40,000, which kind of, you know, leads us into the other story about why we have this deficit currently. But we're happy that the governor did also increase that salary to $47,000. But we know there's a poison pill with that as well, right now, for having to deal with the, the FRS. Nothing is ever really what it seems. But we need to make sure that not only our beginning teachers, our new teachers are adequately paid. We want to make sure that our veteran teachers are adequately paid as well. Everyone deserves to have a decent living wage. I tell you, I have partnered with Mayor Castor on her Affordable Housing Initiative for this very reason. Because our teachers are dealing with so much outside of the classroom when it comes, when it comes to dealing with affordable housing. And when they have issues on the outside, those issues often come into the classroom and they can't give students what they need. This is a big, complex issue. But first and foremost, to answer the question, we need to listen to the teachers, find out what they need, and we need to advocate hard for them for that.
Thank you, thank you. This next question, we could spend all day on this. It's going to be a challenge. And be, and I'll start with Elvis, and this is about equity and about the achievement gaps that we have in our schools. And, and this seems to be a year when everybody is reflecting a lot more on equity. But specifically to the schools, what thoughts do you have as far as the achievement gaps and, and how we make the process equitable?
When we're dealing with our achievement gap and when we're talking about making it equitable, I really think our achievement gap also have to do with making sure that we have the right people in place. Because when we talk about turnaround schools and we talk about these things that's going on, you need the right leadership in place, leadership that's going to be concerned about our kids. That's concerned about what it looked like to, you can have a desire to close the achievement gap, but those, those people that you place in those schools have to also have that same vision. And they have to have that same passion and desire to do that. I, I make no mistakes and people may call it playing dirty or whatever, but I don't. I'm just honest. In 2002, I was a ninth grader. I went to Middleton as an ESE student, had an IEP. But I left Middleton High School in 2002 with the GPA of a 0.6. I had, it was a block schedule, three F's, one D. I left Middleton High School with just in a half a year with being suspended over 47 days. I, 10 days every time I walk across the grass, if I spit on the grass. These things is not acceptable. And it's about making sure, when we talk about the, the school, the prison pipeline, when we talk about closing achievement gaps, it is very important that we have people that's not wanting a name for themselves, but wanting to make sure that our kids is moving and achieving through our schools.
Wow, okay. Selena, what are your thoughts? The achievement gap and, and how do we close these gaps?
Marlene, well, hopefully now you can hear me a lot better. I'll move closer to my internet. I, I will say that, you know, Mr. Pickett's statement right there actually stunned me a little bit. And it was, it was well said. So I, I am not a person that would never say somebody said something very well said. And, and he speaks on educational equity in, in different ways. You know, educational equity is definitely a priority and it's something that we need to make sure that we're, we're addressing because education is the foundation of, of our society. It's make, we need to make sure that it is fair and is thriving for all students. And when you talk about educational equity, we're talking about more than just books in the classroom. And I think he just hit it there when he was talking about discipline, where you're talking about resources. Those are the things that we need to make sure. We're just talking about the digital divide. You need to make sure that we are providing our students with the same opportunities that students in the rest of the county are receiving. It's very important that we also know who our students are and what their needs are. That is very important. And I do understand clearly the role of a school board member. I do. But I believe District Five is in a situation where we have to have someone on the ground that is, that is witnessing for themselves what is needed. We need to make sure that we have an understanding of our disparities and the tools that we are missing, the practices that need to be revisited and the trainings that our students and our, that our staff and our teachers need to make sure that our students are successful. So we no longer have stories that we just heard. That's very important, very important that we address those. I know I'm running out of time, but yes. Yes, they're, they're crucial. They're very important.
Yeah.
And I, I believe that we have to have someone on the ground that is witnessing and sees these things and understands. And as a substitute teacher in Hillsborough County schools, I have witnessed those. And as a mother, I also understand how important it is to make sure that each child is treated fairly and is able to thrive in their school setting.
Thank you. Tammy, you've lived, you've walked the walk. So, so tell, tell me what needs to be done from here on forward?
Yeah, I have absolutely walked the walk. This is the most important job, role and duty for a District Five school board member. This, this District Five school board seat is very different than that of the others. How I operate as a school board member because of the issues that I need to advocate for is very different than that of maybe Member Conna or, or Member Stewart. And so it's all about equity and the achievement gap. Not only do you need to be in the schools, you have to have the skills and the ability to be able to fix the problems. You can look at the problems all day, but you have to have the wherewithal to be able to correct and fix those problems. And I tell you, in District Five, which is largely a black district, there are issues. There, there's been issues for decades. Our black students often have the lowest, or still currently have the lowest graduation rates, the lowest participation in advanced or IB coursework. And I tell you, because of that, I have visited every school in District Five. I've visited actually almost every school in Hillsborough County, and I talk with teachers and principals on a regular basis. One thing I have done, I've advocated for and I will support is an equity audit in the whole entire school district. We need to get into these schools. We need to give these guidance counselors and we need to see exactly what is going on. I've spoken with hundreds and hundreds or thousands of parents about students who have been left out because they weren't given an opportunity by their guidance counselor. We need to take a deep dive into this district and address equity in our schools and what's happening in our classrooms. But I do want to agree with Mr. Pickett that we also, it's all about the people. We want to make sure that we have our best assets where we have the most to gain. We need to make sure that we have our best and brightest teachers in front of our, in front of our highest needs students. Also focusing, starting early. There's an old saying, an old Jamaican saying that I always say, you have to bend the tree while it's young. We need to really invest our time in that early childhood space, making sure that our students are ready for school, ready for the rigor of public education. We know that the achievement gap starts right at kindergarten because we're doing a bad job of getting our kids ready. And lastly, literacy must be our North Star. We have to reimagine curriculum, phonics and everything and how we're teaching our students because what has happened in the past really has not worked. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do, it's a complex issue, like you said, but we're going to keep moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And before we move to our last question, again, I want to thank all three of you, not just for being here today, but Selena for the work you've been doing in the classroom. Elvis, I've seen you inside a lion's costume on the hottest of the year. Tammy from the dais and behind the scenes advocating, pushing these issues. So all three of you really are to be celebrated. I'm going to start with Tammy for the last question. And this is just a sum up, and also are there any issues that we didn't get to that you feel that we should be aware of?
Thank you so much. So I am honored to serve this community since 2016 and I certainly look forward to serving 2020 and beyond. It has been an amazing honor. District Five is steeped with long issues, long and deep issues. And it takes a special person to really be able to navigate these issues, and I've done that very well. There is a steep learning curve. We talk about 90-day plans, all you want, our kids need an everyday plan. A plan that's already in place, a plan that's going to get them to where they need. I have gone through the learning curve, which has been very extensive. I'm already leading very effectively, as you know, board members are not expected to make any impact in their first term. Well, I've done that exceedingly well, including being vice chair after one year and serving as the chair of the board in 2018. As you know, Marlene, the fastest to do it in history because of my dedication and my passion in fixing the issues of District Five. So I've started off, I've started off very well. We're going to continue strong for another term. I won't likely seek a third term. I would hope that my opponents would really engage this go-around and stand with me and learn really what the roles and responsibility are of a Hillsborough County school board member. But I look forward to continuing to fight for this community, to help make all of our students, A students and high-achieving students, to eliminate some of the disparities and to get our district and our families where they need to be. It's an honor, I hope that folks will stand behind me.
Okay, thank you. Selena, thoughts and any issues that you didn't get to tell us about?
Yes, well, thank you once again for having us today. I appreciate the opportunity. First, I want to thank also to the students, the teachers, the staff, parents and the community that have had, that have been talking to me the last couple of months on how to improve our schools. And working as a substitute, as I've mentioned before, I saw for my own eyes what was happening in our neighborhood schools and it's unacceptable. We need a fresh perspective, a new type of leadership. I've lived in many states because my husband is in the military and I have the opportunity to work in many schools. And I know that we can succeed even with our disparities, even with the things that we have going on. Our students can succeed. Now, yes, I do have a 90-day plan. And that idea wasn't something that I came up with my own. I actually got the idea from our very own superintendent Addison Davis, who also has a 90-day plan. And that part of that 90-day plan is something that will last all year. It's being an approachable, accessible leader. It's collaborating with businesses and partnerships and the community. And it's being an accountable leader. Those are things that I have heard you, the community, say that she wanted for me as a leader. And I look forward to doing those things. Once again, I am a mother, I have children and I understand the needs and the wants as a parent. And I am a substitute teacher working in the classrooms. I understand the needs and the wants of teachers and staff. And I am an active part of this community. I understand the needs and the wants of the community. I look forward to serving as your next school board member. And I look forward to serving not for me, but for you, the community and the students. Thank you.
Okay, and finishing with Pastor Pickett, final thoughts, please?
Do those thoughts ever be final? I say that like three times in a sermon. But, okay, I want to say really, I appreciate this forum. I appreciate everyone that's participated. Thank you, Marlene, for all you do constantly for our schools. My final things that I would say is there's issues you also asked about, issues that we didn't talk about. We have a major issue on the high school level. We have a major issue on the high school level when it comes down to our students graduating. When it comes down, and our current board member have already hit on that, guidance counselors. Many people call me every day to advocate. This has been a real whirlwind advocating with our schools concerning making sure. I have a student now have a full ride scholarship to Tennessee State. Everything taking care, football scholarship. Guidance counselor decided that they did not even know that he needed a whole credit in online course. So at the end, the last day before school was out, they shipped him to an Excel diploma without parent consent, parent don't know anything and had the audacity to say to me, "But it's gonna be okay, Mr. Pickett, because he can go to H C C first and then maybe they'll have his scholarship prepared later." I think that's disrespectful, I think that's awful. And it's happening too regularly in our district. And so again, as a board member, that's where we go back to hold our superintendent accountable because that is his job, that is his level. We don't have none of those abilities to go into schools. We can keep visiting, we can shake hands and we can listen all we want. But the superintendent runs the schools. Our job is to talk with the superintendent and ask him, what is he doing about these issues? So the biggest thing as a board member is making sure that our superintendent has the ear to hear our teachers, making sure our superintendent has the ear to hear us as well. And so I appreciate this run, it has been phenomenal. I know for a certainty that my advocacy will pay off. I'm asking for our community's support to continue to, let's do what we need to do to fight for our kids. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. And we'll go around once quickly, just so that you can tell us, where can we go to learn more about you? What's your website or Facebook, whatever it is, starting with Tammy Shamberger?
Yeah, my campaign, my campaign website is keeptamara, T A M A R A dot com. You can of course also visit me at Hillsborough County School Board as well. We're at 901 East Kennedy Boulevard. Email address is tshamberger@hcpss.net. Also on Facebook, facebook.com/shambergerschoolboard.
Thank you, Selena.
Yes, well, my website is very easy, it's voteselenaward.com. And I love taking phone calls, which many of you have done. So you can give me a call at 813-444-5872. My email is easy as well, it's selena@voteselenaward.com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Elvis, where can we find you?
Well, you can find me on every street in District Five, Hillsborough County, every hour. Find me. But listen, also www-elvisforschoolboard.com. And also you can most definitely, that number four, you also can email me at voteelvis@gmail.com. And you can also, these days and time unfortunately in District Five in the political climate, I'm gonna keep my phone number to myself. But however, please make sure you get with me. If you have any questions, you can reach out to me. Everyone know all, because are most definitely able to reach out to me. And if you can't reach me, I promise you, you can find me because I'm on the ground.
Okay, well, this has been a pleasure. And on behalf of the Chambers 1,400 members, its board of directors, we want to thank you for joining us today and for your willingness to serve in an elected office and specifically this elected office. This concludes our candidate forum.